Good evening, welcome to our formal board, board meeting for July the 14th, 2020. I'm Millard House, Director of Schools with CMCSS, and I'd like to, to pass it over to our Chair, Margaret at this time.
It is six o'clock, this session of the Clarksville Montgomery County School Board is called Order. We ask that you first pause for a moment. Thank you. At this time, please silence all other electronic devices in your vicinity. Attendance will be checked during the required roll call for three separate votes this evening. Mr. Nolan, do we have requests to address the board?
There are no requests tonight.
Thank you. The first agenda item is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
So moved, Josh.
A second, second, Madam Chairman, Charlie.
President, Mr. Thank you. It's been moved to the second and fourth approval. Is there further discussion? We will now vote with a yes or no roll call for approval of the consent agenda. District one, Carol Berry. Carol Berry. I'll come back to Carol. District two, Margaret Pace, yes. District three, Herbert Nelson.
Yes.
District four, Ann Martha.
Yes.
District five, Jimmy Garland. Jimmy present.
Having some technical difficulties, I was just on the phone with him.
District six, Charles Patterson.
Yes.
District seven, Josh Baggins.
Yes.
And go back to Carol Berry, district one. Jimmy Garland, are you there?
That Carol again.
Yes.
Should we wait for Jimmy? Or go ahead and, and the vote, vote passes six to one.
I think we have to continue.
The next agenda item is policy monitoring, Mr. House.
Yes ma'am, board members, please find in your board packet information on executive limitation six, which is asset protection. This particular executive limitation has eight compliance expectations to ensure the director of schools should not allow assets of the district to be inadequately maintained, inappropriately used, or unnecessarily recognizing budgetary limitations. Specifically, a complete property appraisal slash valuation and inventory of the school system's assets is completed on an annual basis. Additionally, employees handling material amounts of funds will be bonded. A preventative maintenance program is in place. All facilities, vehicles, and where appropriate, equipment, proper maintenance of equipment is part of employee training also. Adequate professional liability insurance is indicated in your board packet and is in place to protect the district, the board, and staff. Furthermore, all purchases will follow purchase procedures outlined by the state law and local administrative policies. Security measures are in place to ensure protection of district information and intellectual property exists as well. In conclusion, the most recent audit conducted by the state comptroller's office resulted in financial statements being in accordance with the general accepting accounting principles, and there will be no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. District decisions are data informed using a team approach that filters individual and collective actions in light of their impact on improving student achievement. Madam Chair, I think what we typically do is move, get a vote on one. I'll go ahead and do the second one, and then we can do individual votes as, as done in past. The next executive limitation is executive limitation seven, and you'll find this information in your packet. This executive limitation is emergency superintendent succession. One compliance expectation, which is to protect the board from sudden loss of the director. No fewer than two executives must be. Three CMCSS. Three CMCSS, that's really coming in right, right now, excuse me, he was asking. Three CMCSS executives have been designated to handle different duties. Julian Johnson, Dr. Sean Imperatris, and Dr. Angela Huff. Madam Chair, that concludes information on executive limitations six and seven for this evening.
And the last week when we had multiple ELs, we both don't gather. If there's no objection from any board members, do we have a motion to approve EL six and EL seven as presented?
I make a motion to approve EL six and seven.
I second you. Do we have second?
I'll second it, Margaret.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. We've been moved to second for approval. Is there further discussion? We will now vote with a yes or no roll call for approval of EL six and seven. Carol Berry?
Yes.
Margaret Pace is yes. Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
Ann Martha?
Yes.
Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
Charles Patterson?
Yes.
And Josh Baggins?
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero. The next agenda item is reports. Mr. House?
Yes ma'am, we have two items under reports this evening, and the first is executive limitation, excuse me, executive order that I had a chance on, on the last week, which had to do with our calendar. As you all know, we made in our reopening plan in reference to our school calendar, had a chance to connect with each of you via Zoom individually and have the conversation of why we needed to move forward and make that recommendation and move forward with this executive order. I want to first of all, thank each of you for your time on Friday to, to be able to go through that process and, and take the time to, to hear us out and reference exactly where we wanted to go with the calendar and why the reopening plan, why this was a major part in our, in our reopening plan. So if there are any questions outside of what we've already discussed on last week in terms of this executive order and why we moved forward to, to do with the calendar, I'd be glad to answer the questions at this time. The next is goal three, which is broadening choice in our academic offerings to align with ready graduate initiatives. And I'm going to ask that our CAO, Dr. Sean Imperatris, join us in reference to this item on our reports. Dr. Imperatris.
Mr. House, Clarksville Montgomery County School Board, it's my pleasure to present to you our presentation on broadening choice in academic offers, offerings to align with ready graduate initiative. This is work, strategic work that we've been doing for many years, but have really ramped up the past couple of years, and so it's my pleasure to present this to you. Of course, it aligns with our mission to all of our students to reach their potential, and our vision is that all students will graduate college and career ready. So we have some traditional options available freshman year of high school. I think you're all familiar with our academies, but they're all aligned to regional and national workforce demand, and our most recent academy that we started this past year was the Academy of Teaching and Learning at West Creek High School. Available to, to students beginning their junior years, of course, Tennessee State standards and expectations for high school graduation. You start seeing students taking advanced placement classes. We do have dual enrollment opportunities with many institutions, Austin P., Middle Tennessee State, Nashville State, and other Tennessee colleges and universities, and our continuation of CTE pathways, which we're always expanding. There are some non-traditional options available to high school juniors. One that we've had for over 10 years is middle college, and that's a dual enrollment opportunity, partnership between Clarksville Montgomery County Schools and Austin P. It serves as a transitional learning environment to help ensure both secondary success, and it's really meant for a student that's not anchored in the traditional high school setting. They want the opportunity to earn college credit while they're in high school. Now, we have really options now for middle college. Our first option is our fine arts pathway. You know, as far as broadening our choice, we've been looking for a couple of years. It's with the arts, and this is our, our first attempt at it. Students that were admitted as juniors this year in the transitional pathway have an opportunity to take a focus elective in fine arts. I have three that have taken it in visual arts and two that have taken it in music. So we have a total of five to start this process with. So juniors will be required to take one to two college classes per semester, which aligns with the transitional pathway. Juniors will be required to take two to three, and here is the transitional pathway. So we started some over 10 years ago at middle college, and what we used to do prior to a couple of years ago is their fall junior year, spring junior year, they would take one college class, and fall senior year and spring senior year, they would take two. We redid the MOU, Austin P. was very committed to offer more opportunities for dual enrollment and for the same funding. They provided us the opportunity to expand that transitional pathway. So now you see the fall junior year, one college class, spring two, fall three, and spring four. In redoing that MOU a couple of years ago, we also had the associate pathway. So this is really a year-round calendar for juniors and seniors. We admit about 16 juniors per year and have about 16 seniors per year. About 20 of them will take this pathway, and this allows them to substitute high school classes and to enter high school career, both with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. Our first graduates were two years ago, as we had some high school seniors that really doubled up on some class, wanted this opportunity. So we've been doing this for two years now. So what does middle college at Austin P. look like? We have a cumulative GPA of 2.85 or at least a 20 in the ACT. They have to meet university requirements. They have to be, graduate as far as credits. They have to have the maturity to be on a college campus and be independent, good record of attendance, and they've got to be able to provide transportation. Going on, next year will be our third year to partner with TCAT, and these are for students who want to earn some industry certifications while they're in high school and have the opportunities shortly after their senior year to go into the workforce. The students attend all classes at Tennessee College of Applied Technology. They have their high school core classes and requirements will be completed through an online format, school's PLP, which we're using extensively this year. We've been using it at TCAT for a couple of years. They do follow the traditional calendar, but the hours are different. Let me explain that to you. It's 10:30 to 5:30, because with Tennessee Reconnect and Tennessee Promise, there's been increased demand at the Tennessee College of Applied Technology. So our, the majority of our students take their lab classes from 2:30 to 5:30 when TCAT is closed to the general population, and they take their core high school classes before, with the exception of pharmacy tech, which I'll talk briefly about. That also allows us to provide transportation because of the hours, and the students choose from four burning up to two certifications per pathway. Students who qualify can use funding from Tennessee Promise and TCAT diplomas. Both middle college and TCAT are free of charge to our students. So the four pathways, diesel-powered equipment certifications, that allows them to be preventive maintenance service technician, a diesel engine assembler, HVAC, industrial electro, electric maintenance, electronics, and pharmacy tech. The majority of these jobs, when they do get their certifications, just pass their senior year, pay between $30,000 to $50,000 entry level into the workforce. What is TCAT admission look like? It's a 2.5 GPA. They have to be on track to graduate. The same expectation of the maturity necessary to be on an independent college campus, and they have to possess a good record of attendance and behavior. So some two years ago, we started our Korean program at Rossview High School. It's a partnership with Austin P. So there's a pathway from Clarksville Montgomery County Schools to Austin P. It's an opportunity for our students to study Korean and have a deeper understanding of the language and culture. It provides international opportunities for our students. It's at Rossview High School. We placed it at Rossview High School because the industrial park is right there, and the industrial park has many companies and and, and businesses that are related to the Korean community. So Japanese at Clarksville High School, we've put that with the Business Academy at Clarksville High. Again, aligned with the industrial park, and we have a lot of industrial manufacturers in our line to Japan, and so we have honored the industrial manufacturers that have made a commitment to Clarksville and offer Japanese and Korean, and we're the first for the first school district in the, in the southeast region to offer both Japanese and Korean. Spanish immersion at Barksdale. This is a partnership between Clarksville Montgomery County Schools and Adalinga. Adalinga is a private curriculum company that specializes in, in dual language. It's been shown that the students that have a high proficiency in two languages have at least the same academic achievement, if not more, than their peers. Early exposure to proficiency in language is, 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 is really what you're shooting for. The research supports. It's easy to learn a language as you enter intelligence, and you can see that one in seven people in the United States are Hispanic, and by 2020, Hispanics are predicted to be half of the amount of the workforce in the United States. So Spanish is the second most widely spoken language in the world, and again, this is at Barksdale, and we are starting with our first group of second graders. So kindergarten through second grade is, is where we are focused in our immersion program. And they have a longstanding STEM program at Moore Magnet, and that focuses on math and science integration. Very strong cross-curricular focuses. We've got great partnerships in STEM, in STEM careers in the community. The community supports our STEM program. It's a blended zone and choice student population. Some of the population is owned for more, and others are admitted through open enrollment. So our next continuing collaboration with Austin P. National State and industrial companies requiring industrial certifications, dual enrollment, and student apprenticeship pathways. This is huge. We have the Give Grant, which is focusing on apprenticeships. We're, we're moving full speed ahead with our opportunities for juniors and seniors to start apprenticeships with local industrial manufacturers. NearStar is, is one of our first partnerships, and we're looking forward to continue to expand that. We also want to study additional elementary pathways, and we want to Montgomery County School System, 12, an ongoing option for students. So this year, we're, we're doing a K-12 virtual. We've had a small K-12 virtual pairs, but we've expanded it this year as, as a choice with our, with our school opening options, but next year, we want to continue that choice and make sure that we provide that as an option for our students for the coming year, not just because of. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Imperatris, and I know you cut out for just a moment, but I want to make sure that board members know exactly what you indicated. Dr. Imperatris indicated that we did have a K-12 virtual school at our early college, a high school at TCAT, and that is something that we moved into a couple of years ago that we were excited about. So our K-12 virtual school will be an expansion and not necessarily a brand-new venture. So we're excited about this expansion as a part of our, our portfolio of offerings in, in the school system. And I'll talk a little bit more about K-12 virtual during my director's, director's report.
Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I have two questions. Is the middle college still a go for this year, even if we go virtual?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, and my second one, did the cohort teachers program, is this still going on for this year? I mean, did we add the second version?
The early teacher, yes, the ELTR program with, in partnership with Austin P. is on pace. We have a signed, signed contract, and we will be continuing that program as we grow our own teachers.
Okay, that's all I need. Thanks.
Madam Chair, that concludes our reports.
Mr. Secretary of Press, the next agenda item is board discussion and consideration. Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Every year, the board is required to evaluate the director of schools pursuant to state law and deposit BSL three. So in compliance with that, we had prepared a, a chart for the last year that Mr. House has brought to you, showing that they have met all of the executive limitations and have reviewed all of those policies over the course of the 1920 year. And we provided that to you, as well as providing other information to the board to review the director, and we have prepared a draft annual evaluation, what I sent to you. And hopefully you have all reviewed that and had any other changes or comments. If, if not, we would, for the annual evaluation, approve the, all of the policy monitoring and all of the reports that have been provided by Mr. House as far as his evaluation and sign the annual evaluation as we prepared. Are there any comments about that or thoughts about that that need to be addition to what we had already prepared?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the review of Mr. House for this past year.
Madam Chair, I second.
What's our role, Mark?
Well, if, if there's any discussion or comment about the motion.
Any discussion?
Well, I would just like to take a few minutes to tell Mr. House how much I appreciate all his hard work and thank him for all the value he's added to the district.
I think the board did so well.
I also would like to add those same thoughts. I appreciate the work that you and your staff have put in. I know this year has, has been especially difficult at times, and I know you guys have put in just a large number of hours dealing with everything and trying to prepare us for the best possible outcome we can have. I know there's probably no perfect solution out there that's going to make everybody happy, but I think you guys have done a great job of providing us with some really good options moving forward and have us set up hopefully for some good success. So I thank you for that.
Any other discussion?
Okay, then, then call the roll.
Okay, Carol Berry?
Yes.
Margaret Pace, yes. Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
Ann Martha?
Yes.
Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
Charlie Patterson?
Yes.
Josh Baggins?
Yes.
The pass is seven zero.
Okay, that concludes the evaluation.
Next comments for Campbell School Liaison Officer?
Actually, Mrs. Pace, we actually have one other item that was updated on the board discussion and consideration, which is resolution 20, 2021, general purpose budget amendment for the maintenance of effort, and that was an updated agenda that was sent out and may not have gotten updated in your, in your iPad. But at this time, I'd like to have our chief, Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Marsha Demarest, to, to join us to, to share information around this adjustment in reference to the maintenance of effort. Marsha?
Thank you, Mr. House. Good evening, board. So we do have one item that we need to amend in our 2021 school budget in the general purpose fund. So as we were working on closing out our final amendments with the state and local finance department of education, we were notified that basically when we had looked at maintenance of effort, there is a line item for impact aid, which shows up under federal revenues, but that is included by the state in their calculation for maintenance of effort. And so for that reason, we are needing to make, in order for us to, for next year's budget to meet maintenance of effort, making an adjustment in the local option sales tax line item for $1,657,683, and then if you'll scroll on down, we will be putting that amount down into our technology reserve, increasing that line item back to get us back to close, close to where we had been before making adjustments for this year. So that would bring the adjustment there and would bring us to $4,78,683. And again, as I mentioned, this is, is in order for us to meet the state maintenance of effort requirement.
Thank you, Marsha. Be glad to entertain any questions that, that board members have at this time in reference to this amendment and, and adjustment in our general purpose budget.
Kurt, do we need to vote on this?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mark, do I stop again? Okay, and that must have been the update that I did not, my computer cannot open. Sorry about that. First of all, do we have a motion to accept as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. A second, do we have a second?
A second, that.
And that was?
Josh.
Josh. Okay, we have a, it's been moved to second for approval. Is there further discussion? We will go ahead, have a roll call then. Carol Berry?
Yes.
Margaret Pace is yes. Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
Ann Martha?
Yes.
Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
Charlie Patterson?
Yes.
Josh Baggins?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Now we're ready for comments. For Campbell School Liaison Officer?
We don't have anything at this time.
We don't have anything at this time.
We'd just like to say thank you all very much for your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. County Commissioners.
I want to say thanks to everyone who kept my family in prayer during our illness. And he's home and doing better. Thank you.
Oh, God bless.
Thank you so much.
Any other county commissioners? Board members. First, I'd just like to echo, thank CMCSS for their sincere dedicated efforts to provide the very best possible for all of our students during the extremely difficult times. And your commitment is sincerely appreciated. I know you can't please everyone, but I know that you are sincerely doing what you can do. Other board members' comments?
I'll just echo that, Margaret.
I'd just like to tell the team that your work cannot be, can't, can't be added up into dollars and cents. We appreciate the, the dedication that you have towards our children. Because that's what this is all about. It's about keeping them safe and keeping you safe as you go about doing the work that you have set out to do. I understand that Mr. House is the director, but the bottom line is each of you also play a major role in everything that goes on with our school system. And I know that he's proud. And I want you to know that I'm proud of you also. And I'm so glad to be part of your team.
Thank you, Mr. House. Any other comments? The next agenda item is Director of Schools report, Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, to first of all, acknowledge the board and sort of my thanks and appreciation for the complete support and trust as we go through this process, developing a plan to keep our, our employees safe while attempting to, to move forward with the reopening of our, of our schools and learning in, in CMCSS. One of the most significant updates was done last week and, and provided publicly. But I would like to provide, provide some additional updates today. The first thing that I'd like to do is to encourage all parents and guardians of incoming kindergartners specifically and students who are brand new to CMCSS for the 2021 school year to please complete pre-enrollment information that can be found at enroll.cmcss.net. That needs to be done as soon as possible. As, as you can imagine, we're still putting together pieces of the, of the, of the pie. And we need to know how many kindergartners are going to be coming into the school system? How many brand-new students will be coming into the system? We know that the system will still continue to grow. And it's important for us to have that information as soon as possible. Completing this process will allow the district to begin communicating with new families over the coming weeks. It is important for those new families to receive timely updates and make their choices for returning to school during COVID-19. Also this evening, the Communications Department will be sharing with all stakeholders additional information on our K-12 virtual school, including a FAQ document and more information about the health and safety protocols that will be in place should we move forward with the traditional model. Tomorrow, the district will be, begin sending an electronic form to parents and guardians. This, this, the district will, will ask parents and guardians to make their choice between traditional and our virtual K-12 school for each of their children. So they will be asked, again, to make this choice for each individual child. So if you have two children, you'll be making, it, it's possible for you to make one choice for one child and a different choice for another child. Parents, of course, will be choosing. Parents that choose traditional option will also be asked to confirm that their child will be riding a CMCSS bus. The American Academy of Pediatrics encourages comparative modes of transportation for students to have that option. This time, the district will be asking families to make their selection by this coming Sunday, which is July the 19th, to give us time to balance staffing, develop our bus routes, and make other important operational decisions as we move forward in this process. Moreover, since the reopening plan update last Friday, as I indicated, the district has received hundreds of questions from families. District leaders are working diligently to address each of these questions in our FAQ document. And we continue to update that document on a, on a daily basis. Questions that are specific to a student's situation are being routed to the appropriate CMCSS personnel. We ask families to continue to be patient as we address their concerns and provide updates as quick as we can. You know, it's, it's been interesting as, as I've watched board members, the national landscape. There's been quite a bit of discourse and conversation around public schools over the course of the last couple of weeks. CDC has, has a set of guidance that says one thing. The American Academy of Pediatrics has guidance that says a different thing. The State of Tennessee has guidance as well. The federal government has a stance on reopening of schools. I could possibly even tie funding whether the schools be open or not. Most recently, teacher organizations across the country are rightfully offering their perspective as well. And, and as a, as an educator that formerly in the classroom, it was important for us to communicate with our teacher organizations every Monday that had happened over the course of several weeks. I've, I've actually personally been on those calls to ensure over the course of at least the last four or five weeks, to ensure that we're hearing directly from, from the director. But Dr. Sean Imperatris has facilitated those conversations. But you're seeing nationally a, a rising of teacher organizations, TEA, in the State of Tennessee, and has pushed out their, their support ensuring that teachers are as safe as possible. And I will say that it's something that we're focusing our efforts on as well. We've ordered thousands of PPE to ensure that we do open up traditionally, that we're able to do it in a manner where our employees feel safe. Those employees that don't feel safe, we're asking them to reach out to our human resources department. And if there are situations where they have underlying conditions that could affect their health, then look at what kind of accommodations we can make on the school system. But we want our employees, our teachers, our students, our families to know that we're doing everything in, in our power to ensure that, that we're able to move forward with a traditional reopening that has been done as safe as possible. Nevertheless, our goal has, has not changed during this entire time period. We have developed a plan that speaks to three different possibilities. Those possibilities have been drilled in over and over again. We have the traditional possibility. We have the virtual school, Dr. Imperatris, so we talked about. And we also have the remote option. So depending on where the data is at that given time, it may be that we're able to move forward with traditional. It may be that the data, or as a part of this pandemic, doesn't allow for us to move forward and we have to go remote. So, but still, and yet, it's going to be important for parents to make that choice so that we can iron out the operational pieces that we need to iron out as quick as possible. But I do want our community, our teachers, to know that the remote option still allows for us to have the necessary wherewithal as a school system where if we don't feel it's safe to move forward, then we can move forward and, and, and offer a remote option that won't require teachers to be in the building. We're going to be working towards a hopeful traditional start. But we're going to be smart and watching the data and do what's necessary when that time comes. Madam Chair, that does conclude my director's report.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. Thanks all for attending to our special board meeting. And our next formal school board meeting is scheduled for August the 11th. This meeting is adjourned.